How's it going, Brewmeister? You doing good?
I'll check.
Justin, what's up, man? How are you doing?
Justin, how are you?
How am I doing?
Good to see you. Now, you need to get me to Michael on his experimenting on his hair. Oh, they were having a picture. He had a tattoo. I gave him one time. And I told him, I said, you need to go see Jesse.
I didn't lobby him. There's no class. I mean, he was like, well, he's probably in church or something. It's Carolina basketball game tonight.
Oh, is there?
Know what that means? No talking. Oh. I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep you in three minutes too. Yeah, me too.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Ladies and gentlemen, glad to have you tonight for our November meeting of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners. We will officially call this meeting to order and glad to have each one of you here. We, we have all of you are dignitaries. We have, I don't know what has brought out our crowd so much tonight, but just glad to have each one of you here. I hesitate, but I know we've got some mayors here. We've got Mayor Dorsett from Archdale and Mayor Hurley from Franklinville is here tonight. City manager from, and Roger Blackwell is here from Archdale. Stevie Cox, manager of Trinity is here and Robbie Walker, Trinity City Council is here with us tonight. We've got all of our department heads, I believe, from all over the county. Judge Wilkins is here on our agenda tonight and glad to have you. Haven't seen you in a pretty good while, Judge, but I know you're busy. Thanks for joining us tonight. I know he's part of our agenda as well. And for all of you that are here to participate, be a part, and those that are here to observe county government, we're always glad to have you in our, in our presence and your interest in what we do here. We are streamed live tonight on Facebook and YouTube as usual and everyone will be able to view us from at home if you weren't able to get out tonight. We are in the first meeting of a month after daylight savings time ends, so we're glad that each one of you could be here tonight for this event. So with that, we have Chaplain Bill Hatfield from the Randolph County Sheriff's Department, who's going to do our invocation. And after our invocation, we will have our pledge of allegiance. Will you please stand?
Lord God, we thank you again for this opportunity to be here tonight. I want to thank you especially for Jesus Christ, for the forgiveness and the salvation he provides. I want to thank you for the United States and for Randolph County and the many freedoms we still enjoy to this day. And Lord God, may they continue. I want to thank you for Scott Stockner as we commemorate his 30 years of service to the Sheriff's Department and for his precious family. Lord God, we want to remember in prayer the veterans in our county, homeless and otherwise, not only as we are approaching Veterans Day, but every day. May we never forget the sacrifices made by them and their families for our safety. Lord, I pray for wisdom for the commissioners tonight to listen and to have the needed direction for any decisions made tonight and in the future. Lord God, in your word, we are told to pray for our leaders. We are told to pray for the peace of Israel and we are told to pray for our enemies. So at this time, I cry out to you in agreement with other believers at the sound of my voice that you would intervene in these areas and be glorified. And we will be quick to give you praise and give you all the glory in the precious name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bill.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. I did want to mention that Val Dumberville, who recently left our Department of Social Services to join Durham County as the Assistant DSS Director there, but he can't stay away, has to come back every once in a while to see everybody and we're glad that he still keeps us in mind. Best to you, Val. All right. For our special recognition tonight, we are honoring retirement of Lieutenant Scott Stockner and Sheriff Seabolt will do the honors tonight.
Thank you so much. Here to recognize Lieutenant Scott Stockner. He began his career in law enforcement at the Randolph County Sheriff's Office, assigned to Patrol Division on September 1st, 1992. Following his graduation from basic law enforcement training at RCC in August 1991, he was promoted to the rank of Senior Patrol and promoted to Corporal in May of 1995 of the Patrol Division. In July 1996, he transferred to the Vice Narcotics Division as a detective. In February of 1999, he was promoted to Detective Sergeant in Vice Narcotics. In October of 2000, he was promoted to Lieutenant in Vice Narcotics. He then left the agency in December of 2002 to pursue other avenues. He came back in 2004 and went to the Patrol Division. Soon after that, he was promoted and transferred in January of 2005 to Lieutenant over Vice Narcotics. In June 2009, Stockner transferred back to Patrol as a shift lieutenant where he remained until his transfer to Randolph County Courthouse Bailiff Division as Lieutenant in September 2021 and has served in that capacity until his retirement August 31st, 2023. While at the Randolph County Sheriff's Office, Lieutenant Stockner received the Basic Law Enforcement Certificate, Intermediate Law Enforcement Certificate, and Advanced Law Enforcement Certificate from North Carolina Sheriff's Education and Training and Standards Commission. In his retirement, Scott plans to relax, spend a lot of time with his family, especially those grandkids, and he plans to cheer on the Carolina Hurricanes. Lieutenant Stockner has recognized for 30 years of faithful service to the citizens of Randolph County and the law enforcement of Randolph County Sheriff's Office. And at this time, I'd like to thank Scott for his service. Congratulations. That's for Robin. That's for Robin.
Thanks for all your service. I've watched you over the years, your career, and most grateful to have you watching after, Scott. And I appreciate it. And this whole board does, the citizens of this county do owe you a great debt of gratitude and wish you the very best in retirement. This is in grateful appreciation, Lieutenant Scott Stockner, in recognition of 30 years of service, is presented today, the Septem- Sep- this, you were supposed to be in here earlier. September the 5th, 2023, by the Randolph County Board of Commissioners. Seriously, we appreciate what you do. God bless you. Thank you very much.
We've already gave Scott a plaque, but I wanted to recognize his wife also, Robin, if you would. Says, "Office of the Sheriff. Let be known that this certificate is presented to Robin Stockner in recognition of your generous and dedicated support of Scott Stockner and your countless sacrifices which have helped further the goals and objectives of the Randolph County Sheriff's Office." Thank you.
Next item is our public comment period. I'll ask our attorney to please read the rules.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The rules of procedure for the public comment period are as follows. The public comment period will be limited to 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting. If more time is required, it will be at the discretion of the board. Each speaker must give his or her name both orally and in writing before speaking. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. Comments are to be directed to the board as a whole and not to one individual commissioner. Response, discussion, or action concerning issues raised during the public input session will be at the discretion of the board. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation, and speakers should not discuss matters which concern the candidacy of any person seeking public office or matters in current or anticipated litigation.
Sybil Murray.
Yes.
We're back. This is an appreciation. To Save Our Staley Committee and the Staley Area Community, we'd like to thank you, the commissioners, for acknowledging our community's concerns and input provided at the Growth Management Plan Public Meeting on October the 26th. We thank you for adhering to the process and allowing our voices to be heard during the public comment period. We thank you for taking the time to earnestly review the comments by the residents of the Staley Area affected by the decision of your board. The citizens of our community, thank you for hearing our plea to keep our area rural and agricultural in nature and for acknowledging our voice in the future of the community we live in. To Save Our Staley Committee and area residents, continue to strive to preserve our rural and small-town heritage in our area. We thank you on behalf of the farmers, other small businesses in our community that are dependent on our rural and agricultural way of life. We look forward to working together in the future to ensure that Randolph County remains a place that we are all proud to live and work in. Thank you for hearing our concerns, Save Our Staley Committee.
Thank you. So, we don't get many of those, but they are most appreciated, believe me. Y'all were, and y'all were very respectful and courteous to this board also, and we thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you for your participation tonight. The next item is our consent agenda. Is there an item that a commissioner wishes to pull from this list?
I'd like to ask a question about one. I just want to ask the, the sheriff, just because I want to know, the fund, I mean, you're using restricted, you're restricted funds for the body cameras? So now, do all of our, do all of our people in the Sheriff's Department have them? It says it's year three.
We got most everyone outfitted with the cameras. We have some of the detention center folks that do not have them. But yes, on patrol, everyone's got them.
Okay, good. I just wondered what the status was. And tell me this, what is the, what is the longevity of those? The lifetime? Do you have any idea?
I don't know.
Like most things, by the time you get paid for, it's time for them to start.
Yeah. And I could probably ask our Colonel. I'm sure it has a lot to do with how well they're taken care of and the battery life would differ maybe much.
Sure. Okay.
So actually, what this is for is to pay for the cloud storage and the license fees for those cameras every year. And so we have a retention policy with Axon. So if we need to keep a video, we will bookmark that one or tag it and preserve it.
Okay, good.
And then, of course, if it's attached to a criminal case, then it will also be downloaded into our Spillman files for presentation for court purposes as well.
Okay. Good. It's nice to know how things are. Thank you. All right, that's all.
Thank you. Is there, everyone clear? Is there an item on here?
I'd like to pull item, agenda, item H off the consent agenda and just vote on those individually.
All right. My request, we take item H off of the consent agenda and we will entertain a motion on that separately. Do I have a motion on the remainder of the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right. And now, item H, which is appoint Ashley Duggins and Brad Long, reappoint Alan Ferguson to the Randolph County Board of Health. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that they all three be rea- be appointed.
Do I have a second?
And Alan be, Alan is a reappointment.
Yes.
And the other two are an original appointment. I'm on that board. He's been excellent. There's been nothing objectionable in his service. We needed somebody from Liberty and, and he was appointed. You know, we have to have, you know, different, you know, different things there, so. And I've been served with him for three years now and I've seen nothing objectionable. All right. I appreciate his service.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'm a little late in that motion. I would, would make, would have made a motion, but don't understand there's a motion on the floor, so if you'd rather discuss this after a second.
Right.
We have a second.
So is, you know, I certainly would approve Ashley Duggins and Brad Long to that board, but I don't wish to, I didn't support Alan Ferguson the first time around and I wouldn't support him now, so. But the motion's on the floor, so it is what it is.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion? Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
And it passes four to one. Thank all of you. Okay. Our first business item this evening on our regular agenda is the Veterans Court Project, Sheriff Seabolt. Thank you, and you can introduce everyone with you, Greg. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I'd like to introduce Laura Pate, who is instrumental in applying and receiving the grant that we applied for. She's done a lot of the work initially, but this is a program for the many veterans here in Randolph County. Speculated that we have over 10,000 veterans here in Randolph County. And the number of mental health issues involving our veterans continues to increase when left unattended. Many of our young men and women called for military service return home a different person. One in every five veterans has symptoms of mental health disorder or cognitive impairment. One in every six Iraq and Afghanistan veterans has a substance use disorder. And 50% of our veterans living with PTSD do not receive treatment. There's approximately 181,000 veterans in the U.S. that are incarcerated. We did a check on our detention center. Since January to November, we had 67 veterans that were logged in to our detention center. A Veterans Treatment Court is an alternative to incarceration for the justice involved military veterans and service members with substance use and mental health disorders and/or trauma. The program will connect veterans in crisis with local state, federal benefits, treatment services, and housing. And also includes local. This program will give the veteran an opportunity to get treatment and restore his life, get back on where he needed to be initially. And I've seen it in law enforcement where people change dramatically. Once they get back home, they're unable to fit back in society the way they need to and most time it's ignored or they turn down help. Veteran Services projects nearly 10,000 veterans live in Randolph County. Randolph County was among four nationally awarded the 2023 Department of Justice Assistance for Violent Veteran Treatment Court Planning and Implementation Grant for $851,633. NC has eight veteran treatment courts throughout the state from east to west. In components of the program, eligible participants, veteran status with anything other than dishonorable discharge and misdemeanor or felony Class E or lower referred. Screening for criminal history, military history, and substance use, mental health, and housing needs, initiation, case management plan, biweekly court appearances, visit coordinator, and random urine drug test. Five phases that are, would be between 16 and 24 months of the program, adherence, connections of, to resources, and treatment attendance. And the graduation would be a public ceremony, court action, and the judge must approve it. And this is one thing I would like to add, it's, it's not a, a free program. It's not going to be a program where someone who's charged with a kidnapping, rape, attempted murder, is going to have the opportunity. It will be screened by our judge and victim coordinator that is assigned to this program, which would be, our coordinator will be Ms. Pate. And we've got a host of 18 different people, or 14 different people that are on the board. I've talked to District Attorney Andy Gregson. He's on board with it and he feels the same way I do. It's going to be for those that need help and we're going to provide that help to them. We've got Chief District Court Judge Scott Etheridge, District Court Judge Robert Wilkins, District Attorney Andy Gregson, Defense Attorney Charles Brown, Law Enforcement Sheriff Greg Seabolt, Probation Officer John Griffin, Clerk of Court Pam Heel, Mentor Coordinator, which is Harry Brower, Veteran Service Officer Elizabeth Wood, Veteran Service Outreach VA Teresa Bailey, Program Evaluation Mary Anna Hancock, Coordinator Laura Pate, NC Works, Jennifer Carter, and Grant Administrator Ms. Leah Carhartt. And if you go to the next slide, the veteran is going to be looked upon by various mentors that are assigned to look over him and to get him situated back where he needs to be as a transitional person. He's got, NC Works will be there for employment needs. And you've got the treatment providal, provider, mental health, substance use, which would be, I think, Sand Hills, Daymark. And we've got the benefits and local, local services from the Veteran Services Office here. It all lines up around and concentrates on the veteran, the person who needs the help. How much is it going to cost Randolph County? Not a dime. Not a dime. This is all grant money that we qualified for. As I said earlier, we were one of four and I'm sure several hundred probably put their name in the hat. So I'm very happy about that. You have your budget, Treatment Court Grant Budget is before you. And year one, the total would be 281,694. Year two, 283,684. And year three, a total of 286,285. And that takes care of, of everything that we would need. I would like to introduce Ms. Pate, if you'd like to say a few things.
Sure. This was a labor of love that took about two. It took about two years, thank you, to write the grant. We were one of four nationwide to get this and I think we all can agree that our veterans need us and we owe it to them to give them the best chance at life after going through all that they've gone through for us to have our freedoms. And I sincerely appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Very good. Do you, anybody have any questions now?
I'd just like to say I commend the, you know, the vision and the work by the Sheriff's Department, by you for going after this grant and getting it. I was able to go to the National Conference for County Commissioners over a year ago and so two or three of the sessions that I went into were about serving veterans more effectively and one of those was about Veterans Treatment Court. So I am really excited to see this and hearing those numbers. Those numbers have gone up because I remember talking to Andy last year for a little while and so those numbers have, have really gone up. So I, I'm very pleased to, to see us doing this.
Randolph County is a very tight-knit veteran community. It seems like there's always something organized on the weekends for the veterans and that's just the way Randolph County is in the Ashboro community. And I commend you guys and girls for, for being there for the veterans in the past. And I think this will be something that if monitored and looked upon, reported on, it will work. We just don't need to start it and forget about it. We need to stay with it. I would like.
Thank you for your, for your diligence too, Sheriff. And Laura, we're glad to have you on board with us.
Judge Wilkins, he, he's on our board also, if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to come speak for just a minute about what I consider to be a very important initiative here in Randolph County. As you may or may not know, I spent 21 years on active duty, United States Coast Guard, came back from overseas, back home here to Ashboro, 2006. Served as an Assistant DA, Assistant Attorney General, and have been serving as a judge now for almost 15 years. I tried to get the ball rolling on this project, or a similar project, about six years ago, back when it was Randolph County, Moore County, and Montgomery County as our judicial district. And everyone, all the local stakeholders were on board. Unfortunately, the folks in Raleigh were not. So when it came to money, there was none to be had. So I would really like to recognize and thank Sheriff Seabolt and Ms. Pate for their efforts in locating and tapping into and getting approved for this money to set up a three-year program for Veterans Treatment Court. And I'm here tonight not just as a judge, but also as a veteran and the commander of the Randolph County Veterans Council. I'd also like to recognize our Veteran Service Officer here, who has done, Ms. Liz Wood, who has done an awesome job ever since. I have been knowing her since she came on board, I don't know, a couple of years ago, whatever it was, but she has really been a fireball and an advocate on behalf of veterans. And so I think we've got a very good team put together. A lot of us on the team are veterans and we know how to talk to veterans and relate to them. And we also know, some of us who are in the law enforcement or judiciary, know how to talk to them in a way that we believe that they will understand. Now this, you need to understand, this is not something that I would order, okay? This is something that they have to choose, sort of like signing up for the military, okay? You have to volunteer, okay? But the folks who want the help and who need the help, I believe we owe it to these folks who have done so much for us to give them that help, if it's available. And with this grant, I believe that help will be available, and I hope that you will support the project. And thank you for your time. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you, Judge.
If not, thank you.
I was going to mention, Lita, anything you want to say? I'm really proud of our Veterans Office also, and I can tell you that her abilities and willingness to help extends beyond the borders of Randolph County. And you're getting a good reputation for serving our veterans, and our hats off to you.
Thank you. I have a good team, and I just want to thank Sheriff Sebold and Laura. She really went above and beyond to get this going, and without her, I don't think we would be here.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions, the team? Y'all have anything? All right. What's the pleasure of the board that wants to make the motion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think this is a great kickoff to Veterans Day Week, if I can say that, Judge Wilkins. And I appreciate this team, you know, we were able to spend some time with them and just hear a little bit more detail about the process. And I know it's not easy to come up with a grant like this, but we certainly appreciate it. And so I'd love to make the motion to authorize Assistant County Manager Finance Officer Will Massey to accept the federal award of $851,663 and a Veteran Treatments Court Coordinator to Grade 169 of the County Law Enforcement Classification Plan effective December 1st, 2023, and approve the associated budget amendment of $164,322.
Do I have a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion, questions, comments? All right. Those in favor of the motion to approve, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, and it passes unanimously. So thank all of you again for your efforts, and thank you for the extended time we had earlier last week that was really a big help to really get into some of the finances and behind the scenes, so to speak, of this plan. It's very good. All right. Our next item is the Strategic Planning Funding for the City of Trinity. Stevie Cox is here, City Manager for Trinity.
Good evening, and thank you for having me here. For those who may not know, I'm Stevie Cox, City Manager for the City of Trinity. And I would like to thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about the City of Trinity's efforts to secure a strategic planning grant. This grant will be used to cover the cost of the city's Parks and Recreation Master Plan. This plan will allow the city to leverage those funds to secure Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant and other funding for the construction of a park, greenways, and trails. The PowerPoint presentation. What am I doing wrong? Oh, the PowerPoint presentation will give a better understanding of the city's goals for the funding of this project, for this funding and the project. I will cover an introduction to primary goals, development area, timeline, and summary. I will not be long, I promise you. The creation of the City's of Trinity's Parks and Recreation Master Plan would offer both active and passive recreational opportunities to our residents. The master plan would establish a long-range vision for recreational services. The Parks and Recreation Master Plan would establish a plan for both parks and trails by creating physical and mental health benefits for our community. This plan would assist the city with prioritizing and budgeting for our parks and trails system as our population increase. In April 2023, the City Council stated that the development of a municipal park, greenways, and trails was a priority. They requested that the parks and recreation be included in the five-year capital improvement plan with the following priorities: Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation Master Plan, Community Park, Greenways and Trails. Furthermore, Parks and Greenways and Trails is listed as a priority in the Vision Trinity Comprehensive Plan that was adopted August 2023. The creation of the city's Parks and Recreation Master Plan will serve our growing community. The city has approximately, has approved 10 residential developments of divisions that will create approximately 1,400 new homes over the next five years. The city's population will grow from 7,100 to 10,000 people as projected at our current growth rate. It is important to the City Council and staff to be able to enhance our community's amenities and communities. The development of a Park and Recreation Master Plan will provide the well-being, improve the well-being of our residents. This plan will improve our residents' well-being because it will create physical activity, improve their mental health, and reduce stress. Furthermore, it will also allow our residents not to have to travel to other communities like Archdale, Timesville, to do things with their kids or to just exercise. The Parks and Trail location would be developed behind the Trinity, Randolph County Sheriff's Office Substation, and the council chambers, which is shown in the picture that's here. The city has acquired a 31.38 acre located on North Highway 62 and would like to develop about eight acres for community activity and passive recreation. This site would be used for the Trinity Farmers Market and other community events like festival. This is a picture looking at a little closer look at the site. If you'll notice, the site that's dotted with, that's in the lower portion of this picture, that is where we have every, have our council chambers and the substation, and as well as our public works garage. We would work outside of that, work both inside and outside of that in terms of the area that we're looking at doing this from. This project will provide recreational opportunities for kids and adults. One of the things that Mr. Walker will state in a little bit, if necessary, is that we had the opportunity to look at another community that did something very similar and that we feel like would be great, would work really well for us as a whole. This area would include picnic shelters. This, the greenway and trails would be paved with resting areas and storyboards, very similar to what you've seen in some of the other parks where they have done, where they've done storyboards. And it's a way in which also you encourage kids to kind of like get better with reading and for folks who cannot get out and just walk, you know, for like 15 or 20 minutes. It gives them spots to stop and rest and be able to collect themselves and also continue with their exercise. The, this area would include picnic shelters with permanent tables and restrooms. The park would be monitored by a wireless surveillance system. And one of the things why we say surveillance system is thinking about long-term, as much as we'd like to believe that everybody will work out of good intentions, you've got to have somewhere to monitor the site. And one of the benefits that we'll have by having the sheriff's substation there is that they will be able to also monitor the site as well. We would also, a primary focus of the park will be to be an area that would recognize our veterans who have served and lost their lives in the service of our community. And earlier this year, our, one of our council members, Mr. Ed Lor, has stated a desire to do something to recognize our veterans. And we feel like by doing this park, this would be a great way to be able to do that. And we're thinking of a couple of different names, things that we could do, and also who we might be able to name the park after that would also benefit that and show that need as well. There will be three groups involved in the development of the master plan, and they are city staff, the advisory committee, and community engagement, and the consultant firm. One of the reasons why you have all three of those, city staff will have to provide certain resources. Then we would like to involve the community and do community engagement to get their input in terms of the type of project it will be. But more importantly, it's going to be finding the right consultant firm, and that's what these funds would be used for, is finding the right consultant firm to do this. Our timeline for the project, upon the approval of this funding request, the City of Trinity would implement the following project timeline, and these are subject to change based off of unforeseen events. The approval of the grant award by our city council in November, the release of the request for proposal in December of 2023, the RFP submission deadline and approval award would be in February of 2024. We would do planning and design in March, through March to May of 2024. We would do a plan development and documentation from June of '24 to August of 2024. And we would do the final Park and Recreation Master Plan presentation, which would be in September and October of '24 with the adoption of the plan in November '24. This would also include us, by the time we get to the adoption, of also being able to leverage that $80,000 to be able to secure other funding. So hopefully, our goal would be to do that and get even more money. Finally, I would like to thank, thank you for all allowing me to give this overview of the city's proposed project for this strategic planning grant. At this time, I would like to have Councilman Robert Walker to come up and provide some
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Good evening. We've got, we've seeked out a, another city to, we've got an ideal plan, and it's a small footprint, a couple of shelters, picnic shelters, bathrooms, and a nice playground, and hopefully some walking trails to connect some of our neighborhoods. We're in no way wanting to compete with Archdale and Creekside Park. We're just looking for, give our citizens a safe place to go with their kids, let them play, have a birthday celebration, stuff like that. We think it's an ideal situation with the, putting the city or the Randolph County substation for the police officers in front of it. So been there all my life, and I think it's been needed for many a year. And we're going to make it happen. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Robbie.
Do you have any additional questions?
Any questions, Mr. Cox?
I just want to make sure that on the $80,000, that's to engage for consulting?
Yes.
How did you come up with that number? Is that just a?
One of the things.
Since you haven't engaged, you don't have the authority.
One of the things that we were looking at is, we looked at what we spent to do our comprehensive land use plan. I know that, you know, we ended up spending a little bit more to do the comprehensive plan than what we had originally planned for, simply because there were just cost overruns that, you know, that were unforeseen. So we thought that, you know, $80,000 would be a good workable number, but I will, I'll be the first to tell you, the good book says you have not because you ask not. So I will gladly say, and I'm certain that my, my council member would probably agree that if you're willing to give us more money, we will surely find a way to put it to good use. We, I would probably tell you that I would expect that we would probably use every bit of the $80,000. I've got a feeling we would probably end up using a little bit more. But one of the things that I did not mention that I think would be beneficial for you to realize is that the city will put, and will be in-kind contribution towards this, which will be like our staff time and stuff associated with it. We'll, we're projecting that we're going to spend about $15,000 of in-kind service with staff time. We are also projecting with, looking at this as a whole, there's a fairly good possibility once we get to the point about implementation and doing certain things, that we'll be able to get some contributions, also some input, input from other people that are within our community. Mr. Walker and I have looked at the idea that we have some businesses in town that we really need to go out and pursue about contributing, as well as we have three home builders that are also in our community that we could also probably, you know, reach out to them to maybe make a contribution as well. But that'll be really more towards not much to study as it will be to the physical park itself. We were also going to look at, and using a very similar example to what we saw when we went to New London, and that is to do something where we have folks, you know, buy bricks or something that we can use around, especially like when we do the Veterans Memorial, that that will be one of the ways that we could raise some money for that and those type things. We are looking at it from a big-picture perspective because ultimately, at the beginning and end of the day, if you're thinking about something that will outlast all of us, is that if you develop a really good park, that 20 years from now, even 50 years from now, people will still go to that park, and that'll be our legacy, you know, far into the future.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions? All right. I would like to make, and I will remind everyone, this is strategic planning funds, which is derived from our Contractual Waste Management that we use in similar situations with some of our other municipalities all over the county and some of our nonprofits. So I will make a motion that we approve funding for the City of Trinity Strategic Planning Project and the associated budget amendment in the amount of $80,000. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second, further discussion, questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a comment. I think this is the first funding out of the strategic planning funds that we've went to Trinity, so that's, that's a, something I think that is a good thing, that we've tried to spread that money around.
Yeah.
I appreciate if we could help you out maybe a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
I think he, they've been planning to make sure they got a good project to do this.
Yes.
I've attended some of the meetings you had, and good planning.
All right.
Those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, and it's approved. Thank y'all.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it very much. Next is our infrastructure update.
Good evening, Board. Appreciate you giving me a few minutes this evening to discuss the exciting world of water and sewer. Tonight, we're going to be discussing the Randolph County Water and Sewer Master Plan, some updates on our current projects that we have going on, and future action items that we will, staff will be bringing to the Board. The first project we'd like to talk about tonight is the I-74 Industrial Center Water and Sewer Improvements. The I-74 Industrial Center is a highly attractive economic development property located between I-74 and Highway 311. Having access to multiple major highways and interstates, this property is ripe for economic development. I'd just like to take a quick moment here and thank the Board of Commissioners for seeing the high value of this property and taking actions a couple of years ago to start developing it. As you can see from the slide, I can see it, there we go. Design for this project is 100% complete. This project will contain 5,064 linear feet of gravity line and a little over 12,500 feet of force main. The schedule going forward for this project will be to begin bidding this project in January of 2024, bring a construction contract before the Board at your February or March Agenda Meeting for approval, and with the hopes of having construction completed in January of 2025. I will just make a couple of quick more notes here that our partner, the City of Randleman, is handling the design of, designing and construction of the water to this site. And once water construction is complete and wastewater construction is complete, all of this infrastructure will be permitted to the City of Randleman for their maintenance, and any potential future customers on this site will be the City of Randleman's customers. Next, we want to talk a little bit about the Piedmont Tribe Regional Water Authority to Ashboro Water Line. To move the county's water allocation from Randleman Lake and make it available to our citizens here in Randolph County, a transmission line must be constructed. And if you remember, in August of this year, you voted to award a design contract to the Wooten Company for the design of a water line running along I-74 South, connecting the City of Ashboro to the Piedmont Tribe Regional Water Authority. This design will be a 18,200 feet of linear force main, or of linear water line, with that being a 16-inch line. That'll allow us to move our one point, the county's 1.25 million gallons of allocation from the Randleman Lake South to, towards the City of Ashboro. The tentative schedule for this is to have survey and design completed by September of 2024, to have permitting and bidding completed by January of 2025, and have construction completed by December of 2025. completed by December of 2025. I will just make one more note, we are currently working with the City of Ashboro and Randleman to ensure that the path of this water line is as efficient as possible. If there are opportunities for our partners to make use of this line that benefit all parties involved, we certainly want to do that. Next, we want to talk about the Wolf Speed Water Main Extension. The City of Ashboro received $55 million from the state to construct a water line along US 64 to Chatham County with the purpose of serving the CAM site with 3.3 million gallons of water a day. The City of Ashboro, or this amount of water would require a 20-inch line, with just a small caveat there being a, the size of this line would need to be ran through a hydraulic study to really ensure the size of line that's needed. Ashboro is using a unique progressive design build approach to ensure the completion of this project is done by January of 2026. Paxton Arthur's and I were a part of the selection committee to help select that design build team, and on October 12th, the City of Ashboro selected the design build team of Garnie Construction and the Wooten Company Engineering Firm to handle this project. This line has a great amount of opportunity for the county. With future growth that we know is coming throughout the eastern part of the county, this line enables the county to provide water services to anyone needing it in that area. So it will be incumbent upon us to, to look at how do we take advantage of that? So we're currently having meetings with the City of Ashboro and the Wooten Company to look at upsizing this line to allow the county to transfer its portion, or its allocation from the Water Authority down 64 to be able to provide water throughout eastern Randolph County. So over the coming months, staff plans to bring a recommendation to this board with an increase in the line size to allow an increased capacity, which will allow us to bring our, the county's 1.25 million of allocation down that line as well, in addition to the 3.3 million that Ashboro is sending to the CAM site. Next, we want to talk about the Seagrove Yula wastewater improvements project. Due to Seagrove Yula's limited capacity, it was important to find a solution to some of the growth pressures in that area. The solution that came about was the replacement of an existing pump station with a new 200-gallon per minute submersible pump station. This project also includes a little over 9,000 linear feet of 6-inch force main north along US 220. This will connect Seagrove Yula's wastewater system with the City of Ashboro's wastewater This project will serve Uare Charter Schools as well as some residential development along Pinewood Country Club. The schedule moving forward for this project is happening very quickly. Bids for construction were due to the county last week on November 2nd, and the next item on your agenda, Paxton Arthur's County Engineer, will be presenting the, those bid results and asking for your approval in selecting that contractor. Next, we want to talk about the Seagrove Yula wastewater treatment plant expansion. Despite recent improvements, including identifying stormwater infiltration, the system is still over capacity. Current capacity for the wastewater treatment plant, you can see there in the picture, Seagrove Yula Treatment Tank, the current capacity for that tank is 30,000 gallons a day, but the system has had reports of 30,000 gallons a day over the last six months. In North Carolina, there is a 80/90 rule, just in layman's terms, once your treatment plant or your water treatment plant reaches 80 or 90% of its capacity, plans must be in place in order to deal with, solve your future capacity needs. Another reason that staff is bringing this project to the Board is the timeline for the county's ARPA funding is running out, and staff believes that this would be an excellent project that would easily qualify for that ARPA funding. The tentative schedule for this project would be next month at your December meeting to bring a contract for design to expand this wastewater treatment plant. There's many aspects of this treatment plant that are in excellent condition and have a lot of life left. There's a new lagoon that can be permitted. Their spray field system is in excellent condition and can hold additional capacity. Their current problem is just their current treatment plant, their tank there that you see, is, does not have any additional capacity. So the design contract that will be brought to you in December will be to replace that tank with a much larger package system and increase Seagrove Yula's wastewater capacity. And lastly, I just wanted to speak for a moment about our local partners. Implementation of the Randolph County Water and Sewer Master Plan will have many positive impacts on our community, but collaboration from all of our partners, you see there on the slide, will be the key to the success. One of our partners here, Mr. Greg Florrie, Director of the Piedmont Tribe Regional Water Authority, is here tonight. And so what does that mean? What will this collaboration look like going forward? First, at the beginning of the year, staff will be bringing and making a recommendation to the Board to activate the Eastern Randolph Water and Sewer District. This is a district that has, that already exists, just needs activation by the Board. Staff will also be making a recommendation to begin meeting with our partners to formalize how interlocal agreements and other contracts will be structured as we move forward implementing this master plan. And that's all I have, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Well, of course, I have one. Sorry. Will the replacement of this tank help the town of Seagrove?
Yes, ma'am.
It'll help all these, you know, all these other areas, but will it help the town of Seagrove because they have grants that they've received for projects that they can't move on because there's no capacity?
Yes, ma'am. You're absolutely right. This will help them tremendously. Some of the Board members, myself and Paxton Arthur's, met with Seagrove Yula Water District and some of their council there in Seagrove, and they do have a lot of growth pressures that are coming, projects that they would like to see developed, but can't move forward because they are, they're at their limit of wastewater capacity. So by expanding their plant, it'll allow that growth, it'll facilitate that growth and allow them to move forward with those projects. Yes, ma'am.
But one thing, if the pump station, the pumps, the, the Pinewood Pump Station, separate from the Seagrove Yula Treatment Plant?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Immediate relief, the sewage from the school will no longer go down to Ramsore, I mean, down to Seagrove. So all that, the existing schools that have been there for several years, so that'll free up capacity immediately for the Seagrove Yula plant.
Yes, sir.
I guess this is a lot of money that we're talking about here, and I want to make sure that when the county spends this money, that it is, in the future, that these expansion plans don't fall upon the county for maintenance and whatnot. So I think it's imperative that this Board be aware that, to make sure that those funds are gonna be available to maintain and upkeep the system going forward. So I think that needs to be a party made to the town of Seagrove and also the Seagrove Yula Water District.
Yes, sir.
Because we're, we're fortunate that we have ARPA funds and funds available. It would be a real stretch for the county to be able to have to do that on their own. So this is a path through, so, you know, this is a one-time shot. We need to take advantage of it, but we don't need to rely on it.
Yes, sir.
This will also free up some cash because the Seagrove Yula Water District will still be billing these customers, and they're gonna buy the sewer from Ashboro at a discounted price, about two-thirds. So it should allow the town and the district down there to generate cash flow from, from having, they'll pick up all the revenue from bill, even from the school, from the truck stop, from the, the housing development.
Yes, sir. They'll all still remain Seagrove's customers.
But they're gonna pay Ashboro a discounted rate for that service.
It'll help both, actually.
Yeah.
Ashboro can use that capacity to help out. What, I guess, if you look at kind of the north end of their, their system, will be going towards Ashboro. The south end stays in the normal system that's there, but as you showed there, their, their equipment is archaic at best, and, and there's just so much that that's gonna go, but it will give the town actually a shot in the arm for being able to have the sewer capacity that they need.
Yes, sir.
That's for sure.
Any other questions for me?
All right. Our action will come from Paxton's.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Before I get into the bid results, I just wanted to go over, overview a little bit in more detail. Start off by saying that in 2001, Seagrove had applied for our ARPA funds, did an application to expand their wastewater treatment plant to 120,000 gallons per day. Phase one of our master plan actually recommended that that project move forward as an economic development project, so that underwent, and we selected LKC Engineering and awarded them the design of that expansion. However, not far into the design, that's when the capacity issues started coming up, and we had a couple of projects, namely the Uare Charter School and the Pinewood Development Project, that, you know, their schedules were at risk because they not, didn't have the capacity to move forward. And at that point, Ashboro stepped up and agreed to sell sewer to Seagrove as a wholesale customer so that these projects could continue on. Once again, these, you know, the plan was that that would take that demand off of the existing wastewater treatment plant, and then by doing some other maintenance down there, we would be able to get through, but then as we've gotten into it, you know, issues have continued to come up, and so now we're looking at that, that, back at looking at the expansion again. Not long after the project changed to a pump station and force main, we also realized that the truck stop, Love's Truck Stop Project, also did not have capacity, and you awarded $300,000 for that project so that it could go under the bypass and tie into the Ashboro system as well. And then in this past summer, Uare Charter began pumping hauling, so this project is, continues to be on a quick timeline, shorten that time of pumping and hauling. Just a reminder too, that these, these are, funds are provided by a grant from NC Department of Environmental Quality, there are ARPA funds for $2.5 million. So here's the map that Joey showed you earlier. There at the bottom, that is the location of the existing pump station, which is being replaced there at Uare Charter Elementary School. From there, the force main will go north, just over 9,000 feet, through a 6-inch force main. There at the intersection of Piscata Cover Bridge Road, there is a traffic circle. We were able to get our DOT permits with the understanding that that will need to be redesigned before it goes into construction, so there may be a change order coming there. From there, it continues north and then ties into the existing pump station there at Klosner Here's the existing pump station. You can see the hatched areas, the existing wet well and equipment pad that are being replaced. The new pump station will have about 288,000 gallons per day capacity. And then November 2nd, we did have the bid opening, and we're a little bit surprised by the results, in a good way. The engineer's estimate was about 1.6 million, and the high bid was 2.6 million. The median bid was approximately, very close to the engineer's estimate at 1.8, and then the low bid was to Terry's Plumbing at 885,011. And like I said, we were happy with that. However, that being as low as it was, we were a little bit concerned that something may have been overlooked. So our engineer, Bill Lester, reviewed the numbers, made sure there was no errors, and got with Terry's Plumbing, went over the scope with them, and Terry's Plumbing have been adamant that they are, they are fine with these numbers, that they understand the scope, and that they can do it for this. Terry's Plumbing has done the majority of the work down in Seagrove, so that they've got a long history down there, so, you know, we're thinking they're, they're way to go. Yeah. Here lately, I've been the opposite, it seems like, we either come way overbid or... Just a real quick update on the budget. As I said, there was about $2.5 million from an NCDQ grant with the construction estimate from Terry's Plumbing and a contingency, along with the preliminary wastewater treatment plant design that was put on the shelf, and then the design of the pump station and force main, along with the $300,000 that was awarded to the Love's Truck Stop Project. That brings the total construction cost to one, total cost to 1,617,000. That leaves $882,000 remaining that's available to be used. We have asked, Bill asked our engineer to look at that existing wastewater treatment plant. There is a lagoon down there that was built that has never been put in operation, looking, possibly getting it certified so that it can be used for the new system. There's also a flow meter that needs to have the flume redesigned, replaced, and headworks that are needed. So we're hoping that these available funds can be used to, you know, to cover those projects ahead of the actual wastewater treatment plant replacement. This was being handled a little differently than normal. You know, normally, we just do a up-down vote for approval, but because this is the grant from DEQ, they would like to have it done as a resolution of tentative support because they do have to approve these bids before we can actually notice to proceed. So with that, I would ask that you approve the resolution of tentative award to Terry's Plumbing for 885,011 for the Uare, Uare Pump Station and Force Main. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I don't have a question, I have a comment before I'll make this motion. I was at an event the other day, and you talk about the school down there. The Uare Charter is the fourth largest charter school in the state of North Carolina. It's the largest site charter school in the state of North Carolina. So you can see what kind of size you're talking about from them alone, as far as that's concerned. But, Mr. Chairman, we've, we've spent some time dealing with these issue, and Paxton, I've sat down with Paxton more than one time and said, I don't understand what's going on here, what, and he's been nice enough to sit down and explain how all this is gonna work out, and it's really needed for that area, for the town of Seagrove, for the school, and, and everything else that's going on as well. One thing that I want to point out is you, you had some, some construction work, I'd, well, construction work, not work, but construction ideas about what to do and set up, and the state said, we're gonna put a roundabout out there, and then you had to go back, I think, and, and redo some things, which elongated the process, but I'm glad to hear you finally there, as far as that's concerned. It's been needed for some time, and the City of Ashboro did come up and, and step up to help out as well, and I think, I think everything is definitely on the, on the up, up and up and way to go with this thing. So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt the resolution of tentative award for the Seagrove Yula, Seagrove Yula Uare Pump Station and Force Main.
Do you have a second? Second? Have a second? Further discussion, questions?
Paxton, can you guarantee any other additional bidding that we can do that same kind as we did?
No, I'm afraid not. That's, this may be a one-time shot here.
It concerns me, it's that low, but if they think they can do it, and everybody's looked at it.
It's a big spread, I'm telling you.
Yeah. That is probably the biggest spread, percentage-wise, I've seen.
I suspect that some of that is the fact you've got the local guy that's kind of making sure he's looking out for-
Well, I'm sure that some of these other contractors are, they're, they're busy too, so-
They hit it, they gonna make-
Well, if they, if they get, that's great, but, you know, they're not gonna bid on something and, and do it for nothing with all the work that's out there, so.
Well, luckily, this was Terry's Plumbing also. If it had been another company that we didn't know very well, didn't have a history with, we'd be a little more concerned with Terry's Plumbing. They've, they've been here for years and have done the majority of the- of the work in Seagrove, so...
Make sure they know that any other work we got going on.
All right, further comments? We have a motion in a second to approve the funding. Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it's approved. Thank you, Paxton.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Good job. All right, item D. This is Ashboro City Schools.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Frye and members of the county commissioners this evening. It is my, well, not really a pleasure, but it's an opportunity, and I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to provide a capital projects update on behalf of the Ashboro City Schools Board of Education. Hope this will be fairly, fairly quick and painless this evening. As you recall, during our, our budget sessions and leading into this school year, we, we have presented traditionally a 10-year capital improvement plan, and we are in year nine of that plan. In front of you there, you'll see this is, these were our plans for capital improvements for this school year. Obviously, we want to say thank you, and I want to say thank you on behalf of our Board of Education for the ways you continue to support our 10-year capital improvement planning. Each year, you've, you've traditionally provided, definitely in the recent history, a little over a million dollars for us to address capital projects and capital needs throughout our school year. So again, this is year nine. You see that in front of you. The list there shows items that we had identified as being a priority for this school year. Unfortunately, just a couple of weeks before school started this year, and there's a little bit of a, there's a long story and a short story. I'll try to give you a very short story, but we had been doing some renovative work, light renovations in the media center at North Ashboro Middle School in July, and we pulled up the carpet to do some replacing. And when we did that, we pulled up some tile which revealed some asbestos. So in, in eradicating that and fixing that, that wasn't a problem, but we thought we might want to go ahead and do a quick accounting of our buildings for asbestos. Well, in that process, we came across McCrery Elementary School. You see that picture of the school in front of you here. It was built in 1958. Fantastic elementary school, doing wonderful things. And there have been some certain, some renovations certainly a few years back. But getting ready for the school year, we noticed not asbestos and not issues on the tile or in the walls, but in our HVAC units. And we actually found some leaking, and part of that inspection noted what we consider to be mild mold. The M-word is really a dangerous word in school districts, so we try to not use that word very often. But we did come across some places where mold was beginning to appear on the insulation of the HVAC pipes. We immediately took measures to remove that insulation. And again, I could give you a, a long, drawn-out, kinda anxious story. This was maybe the Thursday before open house to get ready for school. So we were able to work with Brady Services. They were able to remove that insulation and remove any mold and mildew that had been there. But due to the failure of the insulation over years and years and years, we found the pipes underneath that insulation had begun to become rusty. Made quite a few holes throughout, and it was paper-thin in some areas. So we were unable to use the HVAC system. So again, running against the clock and the start of the school year, we had to make some really tough decisions. And obviously, safety for our students and staff was critical. Also, it was very hot in August, and knew we needed to do something. So we went ahead and, and worked with Brady Services to go ahead and start removing the pipes and to provide some temporary air. So you see there in front of you, moisture issues, insulation removal, discovery of the challenges of the pipes and need for temporary air. So we were able to move forward with that process, but it was rather costly, and we're still working through that process. I actually walked the building today with the principal, Chris Burian, to get an update on where we are with this process. The great news is, and I don't want to bore everybody, but they are replacing those pipes, they're using a, a new, more synthetic, actually plastic product that will last a lot longer. You actually kinda melt it together. There's no welding that takes place during the day. All the work that's being done has been done in the evenings, on the, on the weekends, and it's not been disruptive to our students at all. But quite frankly, to have temporary air in the classrooms and the hallways, the cafeteria of the media center, it's costing us around $700,000 for four months. They, they came and installed some very large units in, in classrooms and classroom spaces. That's actually turned out to be really good, not disruptive. We looked at moving, at one point, we looked at moving students temporarily to other buildings. We looked at blocking off sections of the building. And, and what we ultimately came to find was this was really the, the best option, quite frankly, the cheapest option too, and the least disruption. So, so $700,000 for temporary air and then all the new HVAC piping at 900,000. So I bring this before you tonight out of a spirit of, of transparency and to talk to you about where we are with our budget. We are planning, well, what we are doing, we're planning to use our current expense fund to pay for the $700,000 for the temporary air, and we're planning to use the capital outlay dollars that you've allocated in our budget for the remaining replacement of the HVAC piping. So the good news is, I'm not actually here tonight to ask for money, but I am giving you a little bit of a commercial that come January and February and March, as we start having conversations about our 10-year plan and our future capital needs, I just want to encourage you to be gentle and know that I, I'll be talking to you about this and, and maybe some additional projects. So I, I want to just wrap up on, on behalf of our board and, and quite frankly, my team to say thank you for what you've always done, to continue generosity, the support that we know we have from the commissioners. And, and again, not to, to make this silly at all, but to, to say thank you for working with us. And, and we're fortunate to have some resources right now, but you've, you've never let us down in, in the, in the time of need, and, and wanted to, at least in November, give you, give you a, a pretty good perspective of where we are with this project and the, the outstanding needs that are across our district. All of our buildings were built around the, in the, in the 1950 range. That's not to, that's not to assume that we're gonna have these kind of problems every year, but we, we do maintain them very well. But we're, we're susceptible, like many schools and school districts across the state, that, you know, there's always, always little issues and things that we need to, to be aware of. So thank you for the way you continue to support us, and I'll certainly take any questions about this particular project or, or budget needs.
Well, thank you for bringing this to our attention. You, this, we've heard some of this before. You, you were immediately letting us know this, and that you've worked it out currently, and then we'll work with the budget next year.
Very good. All right. Thank you so much.
We'll start putting money in the piggy bank.
Yes. Well, I, I want to echo my, my friend, the mayor of Asheville Trinity, you know, if you're getting giveaway money, we will certainly take it. But, no, we, we appreciate you very much, and certainly, it is an opportunity for us to squirrel away some things, you know. You, you can't make great decisions without accurate information, and this does help us to have a perspective, so thank you very much.
I will also say, a ton in that building, and it's been well-maintained for a long, long time.
Yes, very much so.
That's why it looks as good as it does.
Thank you. All right, thanks so much.
All right, this is the second reading and second vote on our franchise, our new franchise agreement with Waste Management. We had a public hearing at last month, and this is our second reading.
Okay, well, you know, as you know, the Waste Management Franchise Ordinance was originally adopted in 2014. It's been modified once before in 2019, and further modifications have been requested. Specifically, three sections of the franchise ordinance. 6A, modified to provide that the property covered by the franchise is expanded to include the entire 190-acre landfill, including both eastern and western sides of the power lines. Section 6C updates the number of existing convenience centers owned by the county from four to six. And section nine, modified to increase the projected useful life of the landfill to 25 to 30 years to reflect the use of the entire site. Last month, you held the required public hearing regarding these changes, and because this is a franchise ordinance, it does require two votes. You voted last month to move forward. Tonight, if you wish to adopt the changes, then you may hold the second vote and adopt the modified ordinance. I am asking also that if you do vote to approve the modified ordinance, you also authorize county staff to make the corresponding changes to the operating agreement between the county and Waste Management to reflect the changes made to the ordinance. And if you have any questions for me, I'm here. I believe we have some representatives from Waste Management here as well, if you have questions for them.
Questions, Wayne?
All right, thank you.
All right. Hearing any, no, hearing no questions? Is there a motion to approve the management franchise agreement ordinance?
I make a motion to approve the Waste Management Franchise Agreement Ordinance Amendment and corresponding changes to the operating agreement between the county and Waste Management. And does that cover what you need? Thank you.
Do I have a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
I hear that, hope. Second by Commissioner Haywood. Further discussion? Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it's approved. Thank you, Waste Management, for your indulgence in making sure we do this the right way. Thank you very much. And you've already seen us use money earlier this evening to help another community out, so we appreciate it. All right. The next item is Project Archive Economic Development, and we will have a public hearing. Kevin?
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity of being here, and thank you for your ongoing support of economic development. I know that the, the focus of this meeting is not economic development, but as we heard earlier, there's a lot of activity, and particularly with infrastructure, which is very beneficial for the work that we're doing to ensure that we have a vibrant community with jobs and, and tax base. Here this evening to talk a little bit about Project Archive, which is an unnamed company so far that is looking at occupying the shell building in the Liberty Business Park. And for those of you that have been around a while, that shell building has also been around a while. It was built back around 2000, so it's been over 20 years vacant, no, no floor, just a shell of a building. And it's recently been acquired by a developer, and we have a tenant opportunity here and a building reuse grant opportunity. So to provide a little bit of detail, we're looking at roughly $6.7 million of investment, including a little over $4 million in, in building renovations. Based on some numbers that I've seen, I actually anticipate that we could see in excess of $7 million worth of investment in this particular project. Forty-one new full-time jobs with retention of five in an adjacent community, average wage of $45,000, and a building reuse grant eligibility of $325,000. As you all know, the program through building reuse requires a dollar-for-dollar match, and so the company will need to invest at least $650,000 in order to qualify for the $325,000 grant. Based on the numbers I've just presented, obviously, that's not gonna be an issue with them being able to do that. The, the company, what little I can say about them, they are a fairly, fairly sizable company with over 8,000 employees across the United States of America today, and we, we think this is a great operation for them. It's a warehousing operation in that particular facility. As you know, we've had projects similar to this. They do require a local government match. The Town of Liberty, this project is within the corporate limits of the Town of Liberty, so they have agreed to serve as the applicant for this. They've authorized that, as well as authorized the 5% grant match that's required along with this program. And so that's already been approved. We submitted the application, and I'm here today on behalf of the Town of Liberty to request that you participate in the match itself by providing half of that grant match, essentially a reimbursement to the Town of Liberty when they pay that themselves. So the grant match is $16,250. So I'm here today to request that you consider participating in the amount of $8,125. That's half of that. Each unit of local government would cover that amount. You also know that the applicant of this program has some financial, potential financial liability. You are not the applicant here. The Town of Liberty bears that, and we're, we're working with them to manage that appropriately as well, so no, no liability on the, on the part of the county for this particular project. So I'll leave it at that. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, and again, appreciate your time.
Any questions from commissioners? All right, we will open the public hearing on this project. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to speak to this building reuse grant application? For or against? Anyone? Senior hearing done, we will close the public hearing and come back to the board for your action under item F.
Mr. Chairman, this is in my neck of the woods, so Kevin, that, that building's been around a long time. I'm, I'm not sure technically it qualifies as building reuse, because I don't know that building's ever been used. But for $8,000, to get that productive, it's, it's, it's well worth it. So that's kinda been a, a, not a thorn, but just kind of a, an issue that's been out in Liberty for quite some time, so it's good to have somebody going there. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution for economic development match and approve the associated budget amendment in the amount of $8,125 for Project Archive.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Pick one.
Paxton can have it.
Paxton?
I'll, I'll second.
Can I?
We've, we've come close a few times before, but we never could get, get across home plate. All right, further discussion? Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it's approved. Thank you. Okay, next item is the economic, the Cooperative Extension MOA Agreement. Can't even share.
Good evening, commissioners. Tonight, I hope you'll join the rest of the 100 counties in North Carolina as adopting the new agreement for, memorandum of agreement for, between Randolph County and, and NC State Cooperative Extension. So it's a, a agreement that will take us into the future. It's, really wasn't anything wrong with the old one. It's, it was this time, extension leadership thought it was time for a refresh, and basically, that's what we're doing here. So I recommend that, and hope you consider adopting the new MOA for the commission. Any questions?
Any questions?
I guess it's basically the same, just updated wording and...
Updated wording.
...remissions and those kinds of things.
Right.
Nothing as far as affects operations.
Nothing affects operations.
Other comments or questions?
Think they'll give us one of those awards now at the...
I don't know.
State, state conference?
If I keep a third time's a charm, maybe.
Okay. I'm gonna look for it.
We get something up out of that dirt and on, down the road, we might get one.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the NC State Extension and Randolph County as a lock-in county.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Haywood, further discussion or questions? Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it's approved.
Thank you.
You are next, Chairman.
I got the next one, yeah. Next thing is a fun thing to do. I recommend that county accept the grant issued by the North Carolina Tobacco Trust Fund Commission in the amount of $5,596,851 for purchase of equipment in support of the construction of Farm Food and Family Education Center. So, and then also the, the budget amendment that goes along with that.
Requires no match.
Requires no match.
Well, we've already put our money in.
Requires none, but there is plenty, a gracious amount, so...
All right, questions?
I guess, can, this is for something they can put their name on, essentially.
Right. This, this, right. This organization told us that they'd like to see what they fund, and, and we thought equipment that was already part of the project anyway would be a good thing to, to apply for, and they, they... were gracious enough to give us that. And I would have to, like to say that, and I know Tobacco Trust Fund Commission folks would like also for me to say that this fund is generated by budget approval from the North Carolina General Assembly each year. So the General Assembly decides to allocate funds to this commission, and then the commission votes how to disperse those funds. So we appreciate the support of the General Assembly in funding these funds moving forward.
I would like to say I appreciate Kenny and your staff and folks that submitted the grant application and also the, I won't say dog and pony show, but the field trip out.
Right.
Their site visit when they came and visited and took a look at the site, so I think that made an impression on them. They seemed to be very complimentary of the project, and I think that's the result of getting the grant. Appreciate that.
Should be making some good progress with all the pretty weather out there.
Yeah, they're moving on dirt. That leads me, I was gonna do this, but this might be a good time to do it. Invite folks on November 13th, a week from today, 11:00 a.m. We'll have a groundbreaking out there, 11:00 a.m. on November 13th, next Monday. So all of you are invited, anyone listening, anyone in the audience is invited. We want folks to be able to come and enjoy this celebration, because this is truly a community event and a community center here, so we appreciate that.
I was just excited to see the timeline.
Mm-hmm.
Page 44.
Do we have a motion to accept the grant?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to accept the grant award from the North Carolina Tobacco Trust Fund Commission in the amount of $596,851 to be used for the Farm, Food, and Family Education Center and approve the associated budget amendment.
Second.
Further discussion or questions? Those in favor, let it be known, must sing aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny. Very good.
Thank you for your hard work on that. That's awesome.
Very good.
Does the chimney stay?
All right. The North Carolina Next is the new ambulance purchases. There he comes.
You know, as normally, I'm here a lot earlier in the budget year to ask for our two ambulances that's already allocated in our budget, that you all gratefully provide. This year, it's taken us a lot longer to find ambulances. We've looked at all of the competitive bid, bids out there under various sources, and they're telling us, all of the salespeople are telling us 24 to 36 months to get ambulances. So we've had to do some rethinking on what we're gonna do going forward, at least for the interim, until we figure out what the issues are. It's labor issues. I don't know if the strike has anything to do with it, but we just can't get diesel ambulances. So pursuant to General Statute 143, 129 E3, which authorizes us to participate in competitive group purchasing programs or competitive bids, I'm requesting your approval to purchase two type, two 2023 Type III Chevy G45 AEB ambulances through the North Carolina State Contract pricing via the competitive bidding program. We've researched other competitive bids, as I mentioned, like the Sheriff's Association, the HGAC, and SAVIC, and a couple of others. And the state contract this year has the most cost-effective purchase contract. All of the others are typically on, contracts only offer bids for the chassis, not including the patient compartments. Just a lot of changes going on right now that we're encountering, and it's putting us behind on our fleet replacement schedule. This purchase request that I'm making is actually gonna be a remount. It'll be two brand-new chassis using our two, two of our older boxes to save some money. The big difference, though, is that these are gonna be gas burner ambulances rather than diesel. And again, that's because we're looking at 24 to 36 months out. So this is gonna be an interim purchase or interim replacement. I hope that we can go back to diesel, because they, in such a large county, it's much more cost-effective to have those types of engines. After adding the patient compartment and specialty equipment, the most cost-effective price we could find that met our requirements for the remounts is $191,414 per ambulance, and that's from Precision Rescue Vehicles in Arden, North Carolina. My current budget, as I mentioned, allocates the funds, and Precision Rescue is an authorized dealer through the North Carolina contract. The total price has decreased from previous purchases, because again, we're forced to purchase a gas-burning engine. I'm requesting the board to approve the purchase of the two 2023 Type III Chevy G4500 AEB ambulances from Precision Rescue Vehicles Incorporated of Arden for the total amount of $382,828 under the state contract. And if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
When you say forced to purchase, that's because that's all you can get?
Yeah, I mean, I've gotta replace two of our ambulances that are the oldest. I've just, we've gotta replace them. They're not, they're still roadworthy and safe at the moment, but to rely on them as an emergency vehicle, it extends it out, so.
When will we take possession?
These, we should have between three to five months of these, the two that I'm requesting tonight. But like I said, if we're looking at the diesel Type I ambulances, they're telling us 24 to 36 months.
Wow.
And fire trucks are starting at 36 months, just as a, I don't know what.
All right, other questions?
Have we used this company before, Precision Rescue Vehicles? I know that we use that outfit in
We have. Last year, the award you granted to Northwestern, and the ambulances that you awarded last time, we still haven't received. So we're still waiting on four ambulances, plus these two. So that's another reason we've switched.
These are two from '22, '23?
Yes. So.
All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, I'd make a motion to approve the purchase, because I like it when y'all show up with ambulance.
Yeah.
We've talked about that before. Anyway, purchase of these two 2023 Type III Chevy G4500 AEB ambulance for Precision Rescue Vehicles Incorporated of Arden, North Carolina in total amount of $382,828 under North Carolina State Contract.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Dowell, further discussion? Those in favor, let it be known, must sing aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it's approved.
Thank you.
And let us know when they get in service, so I can have another accident call y'all to be great.
Right.
New truck, it'd be awesome.
Was there any, was there serious injury at Rick and Archdale this afternoon, right in front of?
Which one? Nobody's been able to drive all day.
Right in front of
No, we've not had any serious today. No, no, no serious accidents, anyway.
Might rent another red light, if you can believe that.
Mm-hmm. I can.
Okay. Next is the Sandy Creek Pedestrian Bridge. And Maxton?
First off, I'd like to recognize Mary Joan Pugh, who's here tonight. She's our Trails Coordinator and has been instrumental in getting us to where we are here tonight, so I'd like to thank her. First off, just a real quick overview. Back in 2017, the Tourism Authority got with Piedmont Tribe Regional Council and the local community and formed a committee to do a conceptual plan for a Deep River Rail Trail. The, I guess the purpose of this was to provide recreation and connect communities along the Deep River. One of the chief priorities of this conceptual plan was for this project here tonight, and that is to connect Franklinville and Ramshoe sections. Eventually, we'll have over three miles of connected trail. A little bit on the funding. This project is funded with a recreational trails program or project for $100,000. There's also carryover funds from an existing grant, $137,000. We have $458,000 approximately that's coming from the $1 million that you awarded to this Deep River Trails, which is more than we originally planned. You'll see that here in a little bit, that the bids came in higher. We originally did not plan to use this much on this project. It brings the total to $695,830. And if you award this tonight, we have to have a groundbreaking in December and project opening in the spring of '24. And this is, still more to come. There's an additional section there in northern Franklinville, which we plan to do, and Bush Creek Bridge. There are also over three miles in landfill property, as well as three miles in Randleman. All total will have around 12 miles of trail. A little bit on this project, as you can see in red, these are the existing sections of trail. The northern is the Franklinville, starts off there at trailhead at Faith Rock, goes southeast where it ends pretty much at the side of the existing rail bridge that was removed years ago. Then there at 64, you have the beginning trailhead for the Ramshoe section there at Tower Components, and it goes southeast along the river to trailhead there at Liberty and Depot Street. This particular project here is in yellow. Like I said, it starts there at Franklinville section, goes southeast to the proposed bridge, and then from there south under the highway 64 to the, they're gonna have a trailhead there Franklinville there at the Tower Components. Here's an elevation of the bridge. See, this is a concrete cord slab bridge, 75-foot span with steel piles at each end. Cross-section, you can see the cord sections that'll be bolted together, clear span of 10-foot with aluminum railing there at the bottom right. You can see the decorative panel that will be in the center, looking upstream and downstream. For the bid results, we had a, originally had the first bid opening. Unfortunately, we did not have three bids. There were only two bids received, so we had to postpone the opening and reschedule a second bid opening. Bids were pretty straightforward, was consist of the base bid, which is the bridge alone, and then an alternate for the trail construction. On the second bid opening, we received four bids. The engineer's estimate was for $300,000. Low bid was for $530,000, and you see the prices varied. Two of them were almost three times the construction estimate. In the end, the low bid was about 75% higher than the construction estimate. Low bid went to Eastern Structures. They're a licensed contractor, been in business for over 11 years doing multiple projects for NC DOT, so they have the experience and background needed to do this project. So with that, I would ask that you awarded a contract to Eastern Structures for the construction of the Sandy Creek Pedestrian Bridge at a cost of $530,000, and authorize the county manager to sign the contract. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Action should've quit a while ago.
Yeah. A little different from the previous presentation.
At least you got the big one right.
That's right.
Any reason you think will cause for the, over the estimate?
I think people are really busy right now, and we don't have a, Terry's Plumbing doing bridges, so.
Might want to consider branching into that.
And this is strategic planning funds?
It's different sources.
Defer to will.
It's the bulk of the money, it's out of that million dollars that we set aside.
So it's a combination, but it's the bulk, it's
I'm sorry. Yes, sir, it has.
We're
Yeah, it was
Contract, not allocation, okay.
The recreational trails project for $100,000, carryover, and then county funds.
I'm really excited to see this finally getting built so that those trails can be connected. I do see that it's been a tourism driver for that area. I was having a conversation with Chief Dixon just the other day, and he talked about what a change he had seen in the amount of traffic come into town. The mayor's here, he can also, you know, speak to that as well, but the people that it brings that, you know, that do the trail and often will stay in the restaurant, which was featured in our state magazine, so, so, yeah. So it does bring people, and I'm thrilled for people who live in the county to, you know, to have that, and now for the, to be able to cross and use this bridge and then to continue on the trail, so.
Yeah, I think this will just make it that much more attractive, and it really is used. Every time you go up there, you'll pass people that are out walking.
It's a good-looking bridge, and I like the, you know, the logo that's there, you know, for the
Yeah, we hope to do that, pretty much on all, any bridges we do, try to let that be a sort of Randolph County
Yep, branding.
Mark.
Good.
I'm just afraid my wife now, we go down there and walk periodically and walk the Franklinville side. I'm afraid now she's gonna make me walk all the way down to Ramshoe and back, stop and
Swim.
I don't, I don't, we don't, I don't do water. We just stop there, so.
All right.
Well, I'd like to
Could I ask?
I'd like to make the motion to award the bid for the Sandy Creek Pedestrian Bridge Construction to Eastern Structures LLC in the amount of $530,000.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Further discussion, questions? Those in favor, let it be known, must sing aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it is approved.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this next and last agenda item for us tonight is not something that we typically or I don't think have ever seen in this process, but it is a process that is permitted under the, under specific guidelines, and it has to do with the earlier funding request for Keaton's Place for the opioid funding. Nothing has changed about that request, nothing has changed about what it's for, what it's intended to provide. Since I was a prevailing voter in that election to deny that funding, I can make a motion now that basically changes my decision, my vote. So with that, I want to make a motion to approve the opioid funding for Keaton's Place as requested and adopt the attached resolution setting forth the payment details and the services rendered and approve the associated budget amendment.
Second.
And we have a second to that motion without discussion. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it's approved. Thank you very much. All right. How do you, Commissioner updates?
If I could just say, notice the green light as you go out.
Yeah.
That's for Operation Green Light. We started doing that last year. There's a resolution here, but it was part of the consent agenda, and it's to raise the awareness of veterans and their value to a community, their services and the services they need that as a county we provide. I would also encourage anybody in here who employs veterans in any way to consider doing something similar to, you know, one of your buildings, even if it's just putting a green light bulb out there. People can do that at their homes. They do carry those at Lowe's, so you can pick up that simple green bulb and put it out, and it's just, it's a small thing, but it really says a lot. It says that we value our veterans and their presence in our community and their service to us.
And they're also on in front of the county office building, no doubt, so.
Yes, and I could also
You know why it's there? It's for a very You know why it's there, it's for a very special purpose.
Yes, and I'll also say that in the month of February, we'll be doing some screenings of a documentary that's been filmed by the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, and it is about what veterans face as they transition, some of the problems that our sheriff has already spoken about, Ms. Pate, as they sought this, you know, as they sought this grant for the Veterans Treatment Court. So, it highlights some of those things and talks about how their skills relate to employment and how to look at things differently in order to get good quality workers in, in veteran population. And then it, of course, highlights the role of veteran services in connecting them to the services that they deserve.
Mr. Chairman, I have a little issue to talk about the behavioral health issue that we've been, the state's been involved in. Within the budget that was passed by the legislature, mental health, behavioral health in North Carolina is, is going to change. What occurred there was that the, there were some changes in that budget bill allowed the Secretary of Health and Human Resources to, human services, to become basically the, an appointed official who will have total authority over the mental and behavioral health systems, which basically in our situation is Sand Hill Center. He has total authority to terminate contracts and also to move counties within catchment areas. So, in, in response to anticipation of that, Sand Hill's and East Point, who is the provider further east, announced a merger that would be eleven counties within Sand Hill's, ten within East Point. That was a voluntary merger in anticipation of that legislation where those four L M E M C Os, those six original ones have to go down to four or five, so it was in anticipation to get down to that five. So, they merged voluntarily, but it had to be approved by the secretary. This past week, I believe it was, the secretary announced that he was going to basically merge, allow that merger to continue, but also a second merger with Trillium, which is the provider of twenty-eight counties further down east, basically everything between here and, and the coast, essentially, those coastal counties around the eastern part of the state. So, what that does essentially with Sand Hill's, Randolph County was apportioned, three board seats. With the East Point merger, that would be twenty-one counties, Randolph would get two seats, and I don't know what happens when you have forty-six counties that are included in one catchment area.
That's almost half of this state.
There are four other, three other L M E M C Os that are, you know, that are, in my opinion, colluded together to get down to that four. So, what we're left with is no appeals process to the secretary to what happens with Randolph County, and mental behavioral health has been traditionally a county issue, so there's a lot of underlying issues with county governance and county authority that goes along with this, so, but who's gonna be hurt in the end is gonna be the Medicaid clients that are needing these services. And this is in a time when we have Medicaid expansion, we have implementation of tailored plans, and now we have all these mergers. You can imagine merging forty-six counties together in a very short period of time, so the behavioral health world is gonna be in chaos for a while, and it has been since I've been on this board, essentially, that they, the state just won't leave it alone.
And this, this is not the end of it, folks. It'll, it'll, they'll get it down to two. I mean, and our, our friends at Social Services who are dealing with this and the families every day, it's gonna hinder their work, and been had it pretty good while, I, I think, I don't think you'd find one of one hundred counties that thinks this is a good deal. It's, it, everybody's a loser. We started this twenty-one years ago. Twenty-one years ago, we had our own mental health association in this county, and then we were told we have to merge with Sand Hill's, and we got a pretty good deal with them. We, at that time, I think, maybe five or six counties, and that grew to nine, and it grew to eleven, and now here we are. It just doesn't stop, and I assure you, this is not the end of it, and I've, we've expressed this to our representatives, so don't drag, whatever you're gonna do, just go ahead and do it, so we at least know what we're dealing with and, and stop playing the games, but.
I, I believe this is a four-year commitment, so we will have this for four years, and then we'll see what happens after that, but it is, it's unfortunate, and I understand there are good reasons for the secretary, but I think the overriding factor is the, the people who need the help most are gonna be suffering the most in this situation.
And I, I don't understand putting this, all this power in one person when all the other activities down there is to strip the powers of one person.
Well, and it's, it's an appointed official, not even elected.
That's right, he's not an elected person, he's appointed, the Secretary of Health and Human Services, so, but just stay tuned, because it ain't over.
Mr. Chairman, my, my concern is the fact you're put together with counties that are not contiguous to our.
We have, we have nothing in common.
Way of.
Well, we'll be contiguous now, because it's everything from here to the coast.
Forty, forty-six counties that.
Well, but I mean, there is, there, one of the reasons for the consolidation was to get the contiguous counties. That did not happen in this consolidation because you still have Rowan, Bayou, who's in the middle of Partners, you've got Alliance in Charlotte, Orange, Durham, Wake, Cumberland, Johnston, and Harnett is being taken out of Sand Hill's and put in with Alliance. Rockingham has been moved to Bayou out of Sand Hill's, and Davidson is moved to Partners out of Sand Hill's.
Our next-door neighbors in Davidson County are not in our L M E.
So, everything here and basically east, with the exception of those larger counties.
From here to the coast.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we're in, I know there's been some concerns about.
That didn't make any sense.
Daymark and some of the folks coming from distance.
Yeah.
They can come, the catchment area will go all the way from here to Currituck, Bear County, so anything in between.
That, that just doesn't make any sense.
So, for people that don't realize that if you think about it, and you think about, you know, what we just voted to do with the Veterans Treatment Court, one of the things that has to be in place for, to work is, you know, mental health, you know, treatment, a treatment provider, and, you know, when he mentioned Sand Hills, we're gonna be working.
With an entity to be named later.
Exactly, some unnamed entity that encompasses forty-six counties.
And if y'all remember back in our budget time, I made the comment, the request, the request for funding of mental health in our county was eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's the same amount it was twenty-one years ago when we merged, so who knows where we go now, but we have, we have funded mental health for twen, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for twenty-one straight years. There's nothing else we do that's held static, constant for twenty-one years, and now forty-six, forty-five other counties are gonna help side all this stuff. So, stay tuned. Any other comments from commissioners? Is there any more business to come before this board? I have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
We are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, and please be careful. Thank you.